Good evening. I'd like to call the board to meet the Belbrook City Council. Today's date is Monday, October the fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Do you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pam, if you could call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Here.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Here.
Dr. Van Beldheisen.
Here.
Mayor Schwalter.
Here. As Darrell McGill is absent this evening, can we have a motion to excuse Darrell from tonight's meeting?
Still moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Mr. Edwards to excuse Mr. McGill from tonight's council meeting, and this was seconded by Mrs. Seager Lawson. Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the formal approval of a work session in regular minutes of September the twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. Does any member of council have any corrections or additions to the minutes as written?
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as submitted. Mayor's announcements and special guests. Tonight, we don't have any. But we do have four public hearings. The first public hearing, number twenty nineteen dash fifteen, Councilman Greenwood.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrook, ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fifteen. An ordinance amending section fourteen fifty point one five, demolition of the codified ordinances of the city of Belbrook. Whereas the city council has determined it would be in the best interest of the city of Belbrook to amend section fourteen fifty point one five, labeled demolition of the code of ordinances of the city of Belbrook to allow for regulations related to the demolition of structures. And whereas the Belbrook Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the amendment to the zoning code on August twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board unanimously approved the amendment and recommended adoption by city council. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains section one, that the following amendments through section fourteen fifty point one five, demolition of the codified ordinances of the city of Belbrook, be approved with deletions shown by brackets and strike-through and additions shown by italics and underlined. This is a fairly long ordinance. There was new language added for our demolition process. I'll read the purpose. The demolition standards' purpose. It is the purpose of this section to ensure that demolition projects conducted in the city of Belbrook are done in a safe and complete manner. The end product of demolition will be a park-like graded grass lot. Applicability: these standards apply to all demolitions of residential, commercial, industrial principal and accessory structures. No structure required to meet the standards of this section shall be demolished in whole or in part without the issuance of a demolition permit prior to commencing the work. Exceptions are fences, storage sheds, no larger than two hundred and fifty square feet and above. Above-ground swimming pools shall be exempt from section fourteen fifty point one five in its entirety. A security posit was added to the process. List of safety precautions was added. And there, and also a demolition plan. That was, that's important. We've got erosion control, starting and end date, staging requirements, and site plan, and a copy and approved Green County demolition permit, which we talked about last meeting, because they require you do lead and other substance checks to make sure that because if there is lead and asbestos, they have to be dealt with separately. But with these changes, I think it was well needed. The ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
So this is the same as the ordinance format that was presented to council at the last meeting? And if you look at the attached permit on the back page, there are required steps and documents. And at the very top of the list is the submittal of the approved Green County demolition permit. So that was a request of council at the last meeting. So we've got all the steps in there so that people know what they need to submit in order to get a demolition permit from the city after they've gotten one from the county. So ours is mostly, has to do with just restoration of the site. The county has their own regulations for demolition in order to mitigate any kind of hazardous materials and such.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone on council have any further discussion or comments with regards to the ordinance?
No.
None, Mayor.
None.
This time, given that it is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience care to comment on ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fifteen? Seeing none, I declare that the public hearing is closed. Can we have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fifteen.
Okay, motion. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Mr. Greenwood to adopt ordinance twenty nineteen dash fifteen and ordinance amending section fourteen fifty point one five, demolition of the codified ordinances of the city of Belbrook. This was seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Next on the agenda is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash sixteen. Councilwoman Mittelstetter, please.
Thank you. An ordinance adding section four one two point zero seven, special events, to the codified ordinances of Belbrook, Ohio. Whereas the city of Belbrook has conducted an assessment of its downtown area and within that assessment outlined the importance of special events as they can help to cultivate a stronger identity. And whereas the city of Belbrook wishes to collaborate in establishing more frequent special events in order to continue to build a stronger community. And whereas the city of Belbrook wishes to establish general procedures for the regulation of said current and future special events within the city. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains section one, that the following addition to section four one two point zero seven, special events of the codified ordinances of the city of Belbrook, be approved. Section four one two point zero seven, special events. Purpose of chapter? The purpose of this chapter is to make provision for special events of a temporary nature which may be held on city-owned property within the municipality regardless of the zoning provisions generally applicable to such property. Any such special events shall be subject to the requirements of this chapter. And it's several pages long, which has been reviewed and published earlier. They include definitions, permit required, applications, conflicts with previously scheduled events, liability insurance, regularly occurring events, sidewalk obstructions, city services, permits, licenses, inspections, mobile food vehicles, signage, additional conditions or requirements, and penalty. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
So again, this is just to outline the different requirements for anyone that wishes to hold a special event. This would exclude anything that is contained within private property that would not be affecting walkways or streets or anything like that. So this would not include things like garage sales. But we've seen a frequency of larger events, especially this year, and we look for that to continue on. And so this is just in a way for us to spell out what's required. We have an actual permit that we will have the applicant complete, and then this can be internally passed around to the various department heads that need to be notified of special events, where, where they are, when they are, what type of activities will be happening, so that we can internally plan to be able to make sure that they're safe.
Thank you, Melissa.
Any discussion amongst council regarding ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen?
I'd just like to mention that this is kind of an invitation. People have events in downtown Belbrook. This is, we're here to help. And it's standardized and just try to avoid any kind of calamities. And the service departments, fire, police, they're always very willing to assist making these events safe. And people have a great time and purpose of the event is carried out, so.
Yeah, thanks, Forrest. I agree.
Yeah, when questions, when events happen and people have questions, you have to have something to refer to. And this is across-the-board knowledge, so it makes sense to have it.
Good. Any more discussion on council?
I think it's important to have something written down so that we do treat each event similarly, so.
We're getting all about process now.
Yeah. It's good.
Anything else on council? Given this is a public hearing, would anybody in the audience care to speak with regards to ordinance number twenty nineteen dash sixteen? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Pam, if you could call, can we have a motion, please, for ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen?
Yes, I move for the adoption of ordinance number twenty nineteen dash sixteen.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Forrest.
A motion was made by Mrs. Mittelstetter to adopt ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen, an ordinance adding section four twelve point oh seven, special events to the codified ordinances of the city of Belbrook. This was seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Our third of four public hearings is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash seventeen. Councilman Jim Beldheisen.
All right, Mayor. Ordinance number twenty nineteen seventeen is an ordinance adding chapter ten eleven, sidewalks to the codified ordinances of Belbrook, Ohio. Whereas the city of Belbrook has identified the need to specifically outline standards as they relate to sidewalk installation, maintenance, and repair. And whereas the city of Belbrook does not currently have said specifications incorporated into its municipal code. And whereas the city of Belbrook wishes to establish said specifications as part of a new chapter, chapter ten eleven sidewalks. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains section one, that the following addition of chapter ten eleven sidewalks of the codified ordinances of the city of Belbrook be approved. The next three to four pages explain the purpose of the chapter. Basically standardized criteria for construction, repair, replacement of sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. The applicability, various definitions, the standards for sidewalk repair and replacement options the property owner has. When notified, the standards for construction, repair, and maintenance to be followed by the property owner and any construction company making those repairs. And it ends with section two. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Thank you.
So we have always had a statement in our codified ordinances that states that property owners are responsible for the maintenance and repair of their own sidewalks. And so this is just to outline the standards. This was actually taken from the township, Sugar Creek Township. And it was written very well, makes sense. So it's, it's good to have standards so that if we do have to ask somebody to replace or repair something, that we have standards in place so that we can tell them why their sidewalk might not necessarily meet standards, because we have them now.
Yeah.
Thanks. Any discussion amongst council?
I think one of the important things about this ordinance is if you go to hire somebody to do the work for you, there, for one thing, it's kind of expensive. And the other thing is with an ordinance that specifies how it's supposed to be done, they have to comply with this ordinance. So you make sure you get the work done that you're supposed to. So I think it's.
That's a good point. Anyone else?
The only, this isn't in relationship to this ordinance, but it can, something that can come out of passing this ordinance. I think as Donna mentioned, when she had to replace a section of sidewalk, you can't get a contractor to come out to do one section of sidewalk. We might want to look into collecting a whole bunch of places that need to be done and then making one bid for a contractor to come in. And we, I'd like to, for us to look into that, to help out the homeowners, because individual replacement is sometimes just not going to happen. Can't pay six thousand dollars to have somebody come out and replace one section of sidewalk.
Yeah, good point.
So I, I think we need to look into that further, but it won't apply to this. But just since we're talking about it, I thought I'd mention it.
We do the assessments of the sidewalks at one time a year, don't we?
Um, I don't know if that was.
It seems like spring, but maybe we didn't do it this year.
That's what I was kind of thinking. I don't know if we've had an official.
Well, we had transition with service directors. And without having standards necessarily, it makes it kind of hard. I mean, if something's really obvious, but we never, you would point it out, and sometimes people fix things, and sometimes people didn't. And if people didn't fix them, then we really had nothing to, to go back on to say, you really need to fix it. So that's one of the things that this is doing.
Is it an option to have our service department do the work or not? And then just build a homeowner?
Yeah. I wouldn't, I wouldn't venture to add that to their playbook.
Yeah, they've got enough. But, but collecting them all into one.
But they could certainly sub it out to Elaine's point.
Yeah.
Yes.
Actually, I spoke with someone this weekend as I was doing garage sales. And I forget where they are, but they said that they do that. They collect all the sidewalks and repairs that are requested. And then they, they lump them all together and have one contractor come out and do it all at one time. So they do a whole area. And they even allow that cost to be added to their taxes for over a two-year period of time so that they don't get hit with an unexpected bill, so.
And it's definitely something we need to look into.
And I think it's definitely something we should look into because it's to everyone's benefit. I mean, I, I think an individual homeowner is not going to want to spend a lot of time looking for a contractor that probably is going to come out anyways. And if they do, it's going to cost them a lot of money. And from the standpoint of safety and just the aesthetics of our city, if you ask people in the community about, especially downtown, you know, it's a state of our sidewalks that are, that people don't like. And our neighborhoods, some of them are newer, some of them are older. And if we can figure out a way to make this as simple as we can on a homeowner without any real cost to the city, then I think we should, you know, try to do it.
Yeah. At a minimum, we probably ought to put something on our website that says, you know, click here if you want information.
If you want to opt-in to the program or something like that.
About this vendor that might be doing all, covering all the side walk.
They don't take a while to put that together, but I think it's something we need to investigate and be, since we're telling people they, the property owners have to fix their sidewalks, which has been in place for as long as I've known. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll work with Ryan on that.
Any more discussion of council? Given this is a public hearing, is anyone in the audience care to speak with regards to ordinance twenty nineteen dash seventeen? Do you know anyone coming forward? I declare this a public hearing closed. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. In a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Dr. Van Beldheisen to adopt ordinance twenty nineteen dash seventeen, an ordinance adding chapter one thousand and eleven, sidewalks to the codified ordinances of the city of Belbrook. This was seconded by Mrs. Seager Lawson. Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Finally, public hearing number four oh four, ordinance number twenty nineteen dash eighteen. Councilwoman Seager Lawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash eighteen, an ordinance amending section fourteen fifty dot thirty-one C, sidewalks and driveways of the Belbrook Property Maintenance Code. Whereas the city of Belbrook has added chapter ten eleven sidewalks to its codified ordinances with the adoption of ordinance number twenty nineteen dash seventeen. And whereas the city of Belbrook Property Maintenance Code addresses sidewalk maintenance and repair. And whereas the Property Maintenance Code, section fourteen fifty dot thirty-one C, sidewalks and driveways, needs to be amended to reference the aforementioned addition to the municipal code for the city of Belbrook. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains section one, that the following amendment of section fourteen fifty thirty-one, dot thirty-one, C, sidewalks and driveways of the city of Belbrook Property Maintenance Code, be approved with deletions shown by brackets and strike-throughs and additions shown by italics and underlined. Fourteen fifty dot thirty-one, exterior property areas. C, sidewalks and driveways, all sidewalks, walkways, stairs, driveways, parking spaces, and similar areas shall be kept in proper state of repair and maintained free from hazardous conditions. And the following sentence is added. The standards outlined in chapter ten eleven of the Belbrook Municipal Code shall determine when a sidewalk is in need of repair and or replacement. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. So this is mixing the ordinance we just passed into our current municipal code.
Yep.
Any discussion of council? Given this is yet a public hearing, any one for the audience care to speak with regards to ordinance number twenty nineteen dash eighteen? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. We have a motion, please.
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty nineteen dash eighteen.
Thank you. In a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Mrs. Seager Lawson to adopt ordinance twenty nineteen dash eighteen, an ordinance amending section fourteen fifty point three one C, sidewalks and driveways of the Property Maintenance Code. This was seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. That concludes our public hearings this evening. And next, we have an introduction of ordinance number twenty nineteen dash nineteen. Councilman Edwards, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash nineteen, an ordinance repealing ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fourteen, adopting new ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations for two thousand and nineteen. Whereas the city of Belbrook adopted ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fourteen to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations for two thousand and nineteen. And whereas there were clerical errors in the beginning and amended appropriation lines. And whereas the city of Belbrook wishes to repeal ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fourteen and adopt two thousand nineteen dash nineteen and correct clerical errors. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains section one, the council hereby repeals ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash fourteen to correct clerical errors and hereby adopts new ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen. Section two, that, that the two thousand and nineteen appropriation, appropriation levels and several of the funds listed below be amended as follows. And down here, there's the two thousand and nineteen appropriations in the spreadsheet that totaled six million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven. The total revisions of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six thirty-seven, six hundred and, six thirty-seven, and amended two thousand and nineteen appropriations of six million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fourteen. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
So basically, if I understand this correctly, the one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six thirty-seven number did not change. And that includes the things that we had talked about at the last two readings, which were basically street fund additions and enterprise funds, which include water, and community environmental, which is planning and zoning. Those numbers did not change, so we're just revising this to include, to take care of the clerical errors.
So this was a total mistake on my part. The spreadsheet that I use for all of our appropriations has like forty different columns. And so each change updates a different column. And I had, I had the wrong one hidden in the original ordinance. So our amounts were added in to the two thousand and nineteen appropriation. So our starting amounts are lower than what was read the last time. So six point five million starting out, ending with six point seven million after the appropriation revisions. But all of the revisions stayed exactly the same. It was the starting and ending figures were off, but it was too significant to let it ride. So we had to repeal and replace. So I know now to pay much closer attention to what I am hiding.
So we'll have to, this is the introduction of this, so we'll have to adopt it again.
And we were in this place.
I feel like the next time I read this, I shouldn't look down at paper, right? I shouldn't. That'll be the forecourt that I read.
Yes, I apologize.
Any more discussion of council regarding ordinance twenty nineteen dash nineteen? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash nineteen.
Thank you. A second, please?
I'll second.
Donna, a second?
A motion was made by Mr. Edwards to introduce ordinance number twenty nineteen dash nineteen, an ordinance repealing ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fourteen, and adopting new ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations for two thousand and nineteen. This was seconded by Mrs. Seager Lawson. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. That concludes our introduction of ordinances for this evening. We have one resolution, resolution two thousand and nineteen dash DD. Councilwoman.
Thank you. A resolution approving the combination of lots fifty-one and fifty-two of the Highview Terrace subdivision, section three, phase one into a single lot, lot fifty-one A. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code sets forth the planning board as the municipal plating authority. And whereas the requested plat meets the requirements of the city's zoning code and subdivision regulations. And whereas the Belbrook Planning Board has recommended approval of the combination of lots fifty-one and fifty-two of the Highview Terrace subdivision, section three, phase one into a single lot, lot fifty-one A of the same subdivision. And whereas the city of Belbrook subdivision regulations stipulate that changes to a recorded plat shall be approved by action of the Belbrook City Council. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves section one, that the combination of lots fifty-one and fifty-two of the Highview Terrace subdivision, section three, phase one, into a new single lot, lot fifty-one A, is hereby approved for recording purposes. Section two, that the mayor and clerk of council are authorized to affix their signatures to the revised record plan. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
So this is went to planning board, which was approved at their last meeting. I believe it was on the eighth. Is that correct, Pam?
Uh, the tenth.
I'm sorry, the tenth. So it's a little bit easier to see when you go to the black and white replat drawings after the staff report. They're taking two lots and they're going to build one home. There is a utility and drainage easement right in the middle. And they're, they know that they are not allowed to build on top of that. And so the home would have to be positioned so that it did not, it was not on top of the drainage easement. So planning board took a look, and this is very similar to what planning board and council have taken a look at before in that subdivision.
Now, does this in any, in any way resolve the walking path issue? Because this is the same area, right?
No, it's in that, it's, it's near the side of where that's going. I think it's, it's right on the line. But no, it would not change anything without necessarily. It's just combining fifty-one and fifty-two in the walking path area is to the southwest of lot fifty-one.
It's to the southwest. I'm not sure I'm looking at that right. That way north.
Let me, let me look at this and make sure I've got my bearings right.
There'd be southeast, wouldn't it?
I guess I was hoping that you were going to say yes this resolution.
No, it doesn't. They just want to take two lots and build one home instead of two.
Okay. But it doesn't make the problem any worse, though, right?
It shouldn't.
Right.
The walking path is between what will be the new fifty-one A and lot fifty.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. My directional bearings might have been off slightly. I think it's to the southwest. I think it's to the southwest by looking at that.
No, I think, I think you're right though, because isn't that, the arrows is north for that way. It would be south.
So this is in that area, but it's not gonna really change anything with that necessarily.
Are they almost done with that plat? We keep combining and uncombining lots.
If I may.
Are we gonna get done with it?
If I may, Mayor, we talked about that two or three nights on planning board because there was a continued splitting of lots, putting lots together and I think the, the big driver or the big issue that we settled on one night, apparently there'd been no long-term look by the city as to what would be the expected property taxes from homes in that area, since that's one of the few income streams for the, for the city. Theoretically, you put two lots together, you may have a large house that may make up in property tax with the other two were, but we spent some time just kicking that back and forth as a, if costs in the city are going up and we need income, that there could be a detrimental effect in the future.
Combining lots, you might get less property taxes.
The combining, correct. Correct, yeah.
Because they're getting bigger lots with one house instead of two houses. But that property is such a stinker to build on, I mean it's.
I think there's a lot of topography issues back in that area. It's kinda tough to do whatever. But I hear your comments very well. I would be inclined to follow the planning board's recommendation on it, but something we have to consider, make sure we do the right thing. But I think sometimes the topography back in the area make it a little bit more complex and try to develop.
One of the things is, part of, one of the lots is a flood plain. That kinda diminishes.
You probably couldn't build anything on it anyway.
Any more discussion from council, resolution twenty nineteen dash DD?
From the zoning department, Nate, I just had a question on the, they applied a comprehensive plan to the geographical area. Comprehensive plan addresses residential housing in relation to this property specifically. The plan wants this and the surrounding area to be neighborhood residential. It's already zoned that way. Is there a reason why they put that in there?
Just to say, just to say they looked at the comprehensive plan.
Okay. They checked it?
That section's always been in the reports that it's at least reviewed and to make sure that it fits.
They looked at, okay.
Any more discussion of council? We have a motion regarding resolution twenty nineteen dash DD.
I move for the approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash DD.
Thank you, can I have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mittelstetter made a motion to adopt resolution twenty nineteen dash DD, a resolution approving the combination of lots fifty-one and fifty-two of the High View Terrace subdivision, section three, phase one into a single lot, lot fifty-one A. This was seconded by Dr. Van Valdeheisen. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Dr. Van Valdeheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seeger-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the city manager report.
Okay, on Wednesday the ninth, there were staff and a few council members took a tour of some of the available spaces that are in our downtown area and that tour was also attended by Green County Department of Development and a member of the Dayton Development Coalition. They, they had not really been involved with Belbrook previously, so it was a good way to get them involved and for them to come in and see our community and see some of the challenges that we have with some of the spaces and to see some of the potential that we have with some of our spaces and just get some feedback and just start to develop that relationship. Green County Department of Development and I have worked together really well, but I hadn't really had any contact with the Dayton Development Coalition, so that was nice. We actually went in some of the spaces and talked about some possibilities and it was just more or less to try to get us on their radar in terms of how they might be able to assist us moving forward, so it was really good. So that idea was something that, that I am using, that concept to apply a similar, similar kind of approach for vacant businesses and for potential entrepreneurs that would like to possibly locate in, in the community. So Belbrook Open for Business was dreamed up and it's basically gonna be an open house style event, so I'm asking that if any property owners downtown have vacant property that they would like to try to get rented out or leased out, that they contact me and we can get them on the, the list for that, those two events. So I look to do one on Saturday, November second from nine to eleven AM and then another one on Wednesday, November thirteenth from six to eight PM. So we would have a list of available spaces, we would have owner contact information, we would have all the specs and rents and things like that, different amenities and so forth. And anybody that would be looking or interested in starting a business in downtown Belbrook could have an opportunity to be able to come and look at the spaces and talk with property owners or property managers and hopefully we can make some connections that could get some of the spaces filled. So creative idea that's not gonna cost the city anything, it's just gonna take some time. Green County Department of Development is more than willing to help me with that and just be here to talk to, to potential business owners about different funding mechanisms and things like that. At the For Belbrook By Belbrook on Friday, actually council, councilman Greenwood was there and he had mentioned funding from banks and financing from banks, so I'm gonna try to get Key Bank involved as well to maybe have a representative there, at least some materials to provide anybody that came with some small business financing information too. So hopefully this, this, this goes well and it could be used as a model in other, other communities in Green County and hopefully we're able to make some connections and get some spaces filled downtown, so that's the hope.
Now, in doing that, are we promoting the fact that we don't have an income tax? I mean, it seems like that would be a big selling point.
Yes.
That, hey, you know, build your business here downtown Belbrook, you don't have to pay income tax, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I had actually made a brochure and it had different vacant spaces and the specifications such as lot size, space size, and then it had a list of amenities, which included no income tax, city-owned water system, some, there were a number of things that were on there, but no city income tax was at the top of the list. So it, it's something that a lot of people might not realize, especially if they're not from the community.
Would the Dayton Development Coalition be involved possibly as a resource for their funding or idea development or anything like that, or?
They basically have a database where we can enter in our vacant properties and what we're looking to market them towards so that there are business owners or entrepreneurs or developers can get in there and if they have an idea or they have a certain space that they're looking for in a certain area or with certain features, then they can filter it down and we could possibly be found that way. So again, property owners need to be willing to allow their properties to be, you know, marketed in that way, but it's definitely something that we could do is help make that connection, make that happen.
Good.
And then the other comment I guess I have is, did we give them enough notice to be ready by then? I don't know how much notice somebody needs, but just be considerate of the fact that, hey, we're gonna do this, you know, get your building ready.
I sent letters out to all of the property owners probably two or three weeks ago and I asked that they respond by October sixteenth, so, and then the event would be, the first one would be in November. And then, you know, even if they couldn't maybe do the first one, but they would be willing to do the second one, I think it could be helpful because it could serve a couple of different purposes. It could allow the possible business owners to be able to make those connections and be able to look at the properties with kind of a low-risk environment and then also the people that own the properties or manage the properties would be able to get some feedback too if, you know, there's some obvious issues that they might not be aware of as to why their space isn't rented. It might give them some ideas too to be able to make some changes to their spaces. So yes, I hope that we gave them enough notice and, I mean, and if it doesn't work out, I mean, we can always try to regroup and do it in the spring too, so. I think it's a viable idea that could really be nice if it's executed properly and we get participation from property owners, which is the big thing. I put this, just so it can be on council's radar, I think it would be nice, we did the community visioning event for our comprehensive plan development in November of last year and we had a lot of attendance, got a lot of good feedback, we were able to present a lot of different ideas to the community. I would like to maybe do that again, after the first of the year, maybe do kind of a year in review and kind of what we've got on the horizon type thing and we could have different projects with, you know, service and police and downtown and the fire and things like that and get the community involved, have all of our department heads there so that people can really engage, see what's been going on and what we've got coming up and then just a good way to get the community involved and be able to talk with staff and see what's going on and get involved themselves. So wanted to see what council might, might think of that and we can, of course, talk about that further at a future date, but I just wanted to get it on everybody's radar as a possibility.
Love it.
Nice, great idea.
Love it.
I got a phone call from Judge Odium of Green County Probate Court last week commending Chief Doherty. Chief Doherty was at a hearing and he was speaking on behalf of an elderly community member and he was talking about some of the things that he had personally assisted the woman with and it was actually the very same situation that I gave Chief Doherty a commendation for during Police Week when all the police officers were here getting awards. So it was the very same situation, but I thought that it was really nice that the judge picked up the phone and called to commend Chief Doherty, so he wanted to make sure that I pass that along to council, so just wanted to include that. We are currently in the process of hiring an administrative assistant and a police officer. We've had forty-five applicants for the administrative assistant position and six for the police officer position, which is a lateral entry, which means that somebody is already working in another department, just looking to maybe change, change departments or communities for, for any reason. And so interviews are gonna be held this weekend, so we're hoping that we can get some selections made and get, get up to full staff. And then very last thing is, there's a television show called The Small Business Revolution and it's a series that works to help revitalize downtown by assisting small businesses and they are actually looking for communities to participate in their fifth season. So they have nominations that they are accepting until October twenty-second. That link is on our Facebook page and I will get that up on our website as well. I don't think that I've put it up there yet, but I will do that. So I'd sent the link to all of council and it's been out on social media and I think that based on the responses to the email blast that I sent out to like seventy-five people, I mean, we've got quite a few nominations, so.
I nominated.
It, it might be a way to get some, some free assistance and exposure for our community, so we'll take what we can get if it's at zero cost.
Absolutely.
So that's it for me.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager?
I just have one question, Melissa. I bought an old property one time in Montgomery County, had a fairly high appraisal rate and I contested the property value for what I paid for it. And I went, it was a process and you had to go interview in front of a judge and several other people in the county. It was, it was kinda drawn out and I got it dropped to that price and I explained to them that I bought the property to invest into it, rebuild it and make it more appealing and more valuable. And I explained to them they'd probably get their money back in a short period of time after it was reassessed and everything. With our properties down in the old village and the old downtown, is there some kind of a process we could initiate for some of the buildings to like waive property tax for several years if they agree to invest in the building for business purposes? I've, I've read about some of those scenarios. Now I know that's, that's giving away money, kind of, but you're looking at getting more money on the, on the back end of just sitting there, they're kinda low valued anyway. I know a lot of these valuations are fairly low in business property in the city. And I, I just, you might not have any ideas right now, just something to think about.
Yeah. Of course, in Green County, once you get your, your reassessment, you can always go down and have a hearing and evaluate that and get reassessed. And then the other thing too, which we haven't done much of, we're trying to do more of, is work with Green County Economic Development.
Yeah.
I talked to Dick Old, he bounced the names around, some people that would be interested in helping out and maybe we go to those guys and see if they could do some bridge financing or something like that to kind of help. That's a good idea though.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kinda sweetens the pot a little bit if you wanna, you know, when you throw money into a distressed property, you know, it's, you're taking a chance and sweeten the pot, maybe it'll be the difference, I mean.
At the same time, my finances are pretty tight, so I don't know.
We can't do it for everybody, but maybe there's a process and maybe we can stay out of it and maybe we can talk to Green County Economic Development and see if we can get those guys to kinda run a show for us, where they would give us the money and then work a side deal or something like that with the property owner.
Yeah.
Incentives are definitely a good way to spark things like that, so I know that we've got very little that we can work with.
Right.
It's a good idea to at least explore to see if maybe there's some way that we can do something creative with targeted areas.
Yeah.
Maybe our first step is let's set something up with Green County Economic Development and start talking to those guys a little bit.
Yep.
Yeah.
Can do.
Thanks, good idea.
Thanks.
Anybody else, any comments on the city manager's report?
I just, not specifically on the report, but just the other revitalization of what we have going up downtown. I know that we formed that special group and I haven't really heard much about it since then. Is there any updates that you have about what they're thinking of or what they're doing or when they're gonna maybe report to us about what they're thinking of?
Yeah, so they have a name, they have a mission and they have a vision and I don't have it in front of me, but it's called Belbrook By Design. So Tony Calley is the head of that and he is, he's a business owner in the community. He is the all-state agent, he's the one that bought the old doctor's office up on West Franklin, that property, the really nice property on the big lot, up on the north side of West Franklin. So Tony Calley is heading that up. There are seven total board members and so they, they have, they meet every Thursday and so they have been working on just kind of the nuts and bolts right now, so mission, vision, bylaws, things like that, trying to, trying to get organized. So Tony did come and speak to council once, I think it was, I don't even know if all the board members were in place at that point yet, but I definitely told him that it would be a good idea for him to come and give regular updates as there's things to update about, so as long as council is still favorable towards that, I could maybe ask him to come back on a quarterly basis or something like that, if that makes sense.
Sure.
But yeah, I think that there's, there's gonna be a lot of really exciting things to come out of that and people are really excited and it's, it's not really very visible right now, but there's a lot of energy behind that effort, so I think talking about it and promoting it as much as possible is definitely gonna be important so that people know that there's, there's still things happening as a result of all of that.
And this is an all voluntary organization, right?
Yes.
It's important for the public to know that's, that's their, I don't know, that's their structure.
Yep.
And a lot of the members of that committee are not citizens, but they're property owners in Belbrook and Tony's a very high-energy individual, so I think he's the best guy we have to leave that, that gives a perfect choice and he wanted to do it too, so.
He raised his hand immediately.
And another thing, Tony and people on boards, they got skin in the game, so.
Yeah, they do.
That's, that's great, so, and Tony's really good.
Absolutely. Any more comments on the city manager report? Let's move on to committee reports. Service?
I just wanna remind folks that because fall is here, the leaves will be falling or are falling, so please do not rake the leaves into the street. That will mess up the sewers and we do not have a leaf pickup in Belbrook, so you can mulch them or compost them or have a separate, your own private service pick them up.
We could also stay in Green County, can't we?
I believe we can.
Yeah, the Land Hillery, whatever.
But it's best to mulch them.
Okay. Anything else, Donna?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Safety?
Yes, Mayor, I just got a few notes about the fire department. Nine October, last Tuesday, the fire department had an open house. It was a beautiful night for weather, a lot of people attended of all ages. Fire department staff performed an extraction drill using a donated car from Fire Lieutenant Narke. In a short while, his car was transformed to a doorless and roofless shell. And the fire department also performed a stove fire drill, that was excellent. I learned a few things on that one. It was well done. I also spoke with Chief Nighthard about the bedroom remodel, the remodel, excuse me, the remodel's complete except for a few items on a punch list. The, he's very.
The, he's very pleased with the outcome, the project was sorely needed for the health and welfare of our firefighters. The budget projection was, I think, $50,000, he said it'll probably come in a lot lower than that, that's always good. And Chief, he's always really good with watching money, he, he's very aware of his budget process and I asked him, I said, this year coming up, do we have any surprises? You know, a lot of things that the fire department uses, hoses and suits and tanks and stuff like that, they're dated and sometimes they come up at some years, a lot of them need replaced, which means, you know, you're, you have to spend a lot of money that, you know, you maybe weren't planning on, but nothing, no surprises this year as far as the fire department said. Said the work was professionally done, it was inspected and approved by Green County Building Inspection. Some of the improvements are better air conditioning, better fire and carbon monoxide detectors, noise cancellation systems so you can sleep better, and they had to provide a positive air pressure in the sleeping quarters because of the garage where the fire equipment is, is a possible fire, carbon monoxide, so in the sleeping quarters you have to have a positive air to make sure nothing can, carbon monoxide can infiltrate the bed, sleeping The, they also had some different lighting so, so you can see but doesn't wake you up. The, as always, our fire department demonstrated very professional, well-done demonstrations over the past several years. The fire department is always busy with training and working hard. The level of enthusiasm, professionalism is not better anywhere else and they do a great job. That's all I have.
Thank you, Forrest. Want to add some audit?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Community affairs?
Planning Board recommendation, we had a vacancy and the Community Affairs Committee met several weeks ago and recommended, after interviewing a number of applicants, to appoint Tim Tuttle as our replacement for Dr. Van Veldheisen, since we snatched him for council. And he will, he's out of town, I believe, so he will be installed at the next council meeting. Is that, am I correct on that, Bam?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion?
So, we have a motion then, that gentleman we selected, so that's our recommendation, so we just need a second for it.
Second, please. Thank you.
A motion was made by Mrs. Mittelstetter to appoint Timothy Tuttle to fill the vacant seat on the planning board. This was seconded by Dr. Van Veldheisen. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Schweller?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else on line?
Just remind people that Halloween in the park is coming up, part of the community. I think it's next Saturday, I forgot to write it down.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay, two Saturdays. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Old business? I believe we have any. New business? We do have the Green County Master Trail Plan Support Request.
So, I believe this was probably two or three months ago, Green County Regional Planning and Green County Parks and Trails had a collaborative meeting where all of the municipalities, cities, townships, villages, were all invited to a meeting and we all got around maps and looked at the current trail system and where possible trail connections that make sense were and everybody got to be able to put in their input and they're, they are wanting to do a master trail plan for the entire county. So, this would require the use of a consultant to put this together and they are asking each municipality to contribute $1,250 in 2020, in the first quarter of 2020, to go towards supporting the development of that plan because it's going to cost, it's going to cost a chunk of money to develop. So, it's optional if we want to financially support that, but I think that given Bellebrook's strong biking community and especially our, our desire to be connected to Spring Valley at some point, it would be worthwhile to participate in the planning of that. So, basically, they need to know whether or not we would like to participate and be able to commit $1,250 by November the 8th. So, if council wishes to think about it and maybe let, let me know at the next meeting, we could do that, but I put some materials in the packet for council to refer to, but they would like for us to be able to let them know by November 8th and then it, it would also be able to be incorporated at that point into the 2020 budget as well.
Is this like our first installment or is this our total ask?
Total. That, that would be the total.
This covers the 50, the $50,000 fee, which is going to be the assessment and then that is some money there too for the park, for the pathway too if they construct new ones or.
Um, no, it's, this, yeah, this would just be for the plan. So, the master plan is basically going to identify all of the connections that make sense and once we have a, a plan, a formalized plan, then that's something, that's the first step to be able to use, to be able to go out and to be able to receive funding for connections and things like that, because then you can say that it was part of a countywide plan and that just is beneficial for, for future grants and funding.
Is our only connection with Spring Valley, is that the only contiguous?
Um, that was the main one that was identified. In Green County, I would say that that's probably the, the biggest one. There were some connections to Kettering and to Centerville that were on the map as part of MVRPC's plan that they already have for future connections, but in terms of the countywide plan, the connection to Spring Valley is the, the main one.
Is it supported by all the other communities? Have you talked to any of the other city managers or the local administration?
I have not, we just got this letter and this request last week, so I haven't had an opportunity to talk to anybody else about it, but I know that everybody that was in the room that participated in the discussions when we all met together were all in favor of having a plan for the county, so how many people are actually going to commit financially, I'm not sure of that yet.
Or is that it? We're not going to get to Spring Valley unless Sugar Creek's in.
Mm-hmm. And Sugar Creek was part of the meeting too. There were two.
At least with them to see if they're going to be in.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I can definitely, I can definitely check around if council wants to think about it and we can touch back on it next meeting.
And this does look like they also get charged the $1,250.
Everybody that participates would.
Does that include the county? I mean, it seemed like they would be the biggest beneficiary of it.
Yeah.
So, they should have the biggest financial stake, just my opinion, but.
And Green County Parks and Trails and regional planning are their departments, so they're going to be contributing their resources towards the development and the, the development of the plan as well. So, kind of like our comprehensive plan, it took a lot of our staff time to be able to, to get to that point, so I imagine that that would be kind of an in-kind situation in terms of dollar amount that they might put towards it, I can definitely ask.
I mean, it's not, it's not a lot of money, but still, it's still money that's spent. Now, I would like to know what, first of all, a long-term financial impact on us might be, like to Donna's point, are they going to come back and say, this is your second installment?
Mm-hmm.
If there is a liability of connecting us to Spring Valley, who pays for that? Is that a city of Bellebrook, Spring Valley issue, is that a county issue? I mean, I'd just like to know what we were getting for that $1,250 other than a, a report.
Good idea. Can we go to the website and see the Green County Parks and Trails or are they visible out there or they haven't posted or?
Um, I don't, I don't know if that's posted or not. I can definitely ask and if it is, I can, I can get one out there.
I'd just like to see what it looks like as far as what connections would be and what connectivity might be.
Yeah, I'll check.
Okay.
For what it's worth, I let you the scope of work, the program plan, the cost and all that seemed reasonable, that if they raise that much money, that the work could be done as described and a reasonable timeline laid out.
I think your timeline's like a year, isn't it, or it seemed relatively quick?
Yeah, it wasn't drawn out, I don't remember what it was off the top of my head.
No, it just goes to month 6.
Six months.
Yeah. Okay. Good, thanks. Let's put down the discussion for, do some research and investigation on it, put it on the schedule for October 28th.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks. Brings us to open discussion. We'll first go to council, then the audience.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood.
Nothing, Mayor.
I just remind the folks, and I believe beggar's night is going to still be scheduled for Halloween. A couple of years ago, we agreed with some of the other local communities that we would always have it on Halloween, no matter rain, shine, or anything, whether it was a Saturday or a Wednesday or whatever, so just wanted to remind folks that's when beggar's night is in Bellebrook.
I saw the posting today, it says October 31st, rain or shine.
Six days, yeah. Because last year, I think it rained and a lot of people asked if we were going to reschedule. And it's mostly a safety issue, just so that everybody knows that on that day, you need to watch out for little kids running across the street with masks on that probably can't see and are really excited about candy, so that's one of the reasons why it's done that way is, and plus it keeps people from other communities from going into other communities. You can just take care of your community and have it all there at the same time.
Absolutely. Thank you, Donna.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing. Okay, I just wanted to again congratulate Chief Doherty, I mean, he had a very busy summer and I think it's very impressive that he got a commendation from the judge and I think he continues to do a great job for us and I think he's got a, a good department and I think our, our fire department put on an outstanding open house last Tuesday night and again, well-attended and just, just a nice community event. Given that council's had open discussion, now we would go to the audience. If you'd like to speak, give your name, address and your title to three minutes. Going once, going twice, going three times. Does any member of council have any other business to come before this meeting?
None, Mayor.
Seeing that, I declare the meeting adjourned.